Ah, we actually have a quorum. So let's first call the roll and then we'll call Mr. Bernson for presentation. Good morning. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on May 29, 2001. There are 15 council districts. There are three council meetings a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10 o'clock. The council meetings are being filmed on the city's cable station, Channel 35, where we do multiple reruns, and we are also available by council phone. Please call the roll.
Bernson, Sheik, Fier, Hernandez, Holden, Mizakowski, Pacheco, Pidiri, Ridley, Thomas, Wornich, Wex, Walter, Galanter, 10 members present in the quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. We will start by, let's do the minutes, and then we'll recognize Mr. Bernson.
Approval of the minutes?
Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And those two. And now, the Chair will recognize Mr. Bernson for presentation.
Who's getting it? Who's going to receive it? You're going to receive it, okay? Very good. I want to get my glasses on so I can see, okay?
I don't know if you remember me, but I'm Lloyd Brewer's grandson.
Oh, my God.
So how you doing?
Good. How are you? Lloyd and I go back to 1959.
Oh, yeah. I remember you from back.
Yeah. Members of the council, it is my pleasure today to have a group here from Elks International to initiate the Youth Week, which is sponsored by the Elks National Organization. The Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks has designated the week beginning on the first Sunday in May as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition to their service to community, state, and nation. Canoga Park Lodge, number 2190, will sponsor an observance during that week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community. Whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for advancement of our free society, whereas our youth need guidance, inspiration, encouragement, which we alone can give in order to help develop those qualities of character essential for future leadership and go forth to serve our country. To achieve this worthy object, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes, aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore be resolved by the adoption of this resolution, Los Angeles City Council declares that the first Sunday in May, well, we're actually a little late for that, but we'll do it anyway, as Youth Week, and urge all departments of government, civic, fraternal, and patriotic groups and our citizens to participate wholeheartedly in observance. Let me just editorialize a little bit on this and not read from the resolution. I think that our youth are our most important thing that we have in this country. It is the future of our community, the future of our country. So for us to emphasize the things that we need to do to prepare them for their future, I want to commend the Elks National for this and present this resolution to them for their work in recognizing this week for our youth of our country. Thank you. You want to say a word to them? Keep them in the car.
I will.
Okay? Very good.
Councilman Bernson and council, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today and meet with your, and we also appreciate the fact of what you've done for youth in this area. This, a group behind you here is from a Limerick School, which is one of the schools that we adopted, school here, the Canoga Park Elks Lodge.
In my district.
In your district. Exactly right, Hal.
Stand up. We might as well get you all on television. There we go. Welcome to the council chamber.
And this is, y'all, this school here is the lower-income level school, and the Canoga Park Elks Lodge has adopted this school, and we would encourage others in the council, if you have areas or young people who are in need, because some of these young people have been asking all day long, is this the city government? Well, this indeed is the city government, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here. And Hal, once again, we appreciate your work with us.
Thank you, Dave. Let me just add, if Ruth Richter here, she will tell you that Limerick School is in Winnetka. But anyway, and I used to, my previous home that I had 20-some years ago was not very far from Limerick School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Follow me, we'll take some pictures back there, okay? This way.
Thank you for all your work, and thank you, kids, for coming to school, taking the day off from school and coming to the council chamber. We're going to put you all to work. Mr. Savornich wishes to be heard. Speak. Rudy? Could you wish to be heard?
No.
No. Sorry. Okay. He doesn't wish to be heard. Save it for later. All right. I think that brings us to the first order of business here.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there is a request to continue items 35 and 36 to tomorrow, which is May 30.
All right. Is there any objection? Items 35 and 36 are hereby continued.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 5 are items noticed for public hearing. Item number 1 is a communication from the city attorney and ordinance fixing rates for public ambulance services. I believe there will be 12 council members present today.
Well, then, let's hold the ordinances. We'll hold all the ordinances until we have 12.
The next item, then, Madam President, items for which public hearings have been held, item number 6 is a majority and minority reports from the Plum Committee, Planning Land Use and Management Committee.
All right. Ms. Mizakowski called item, has called item 6 special, and we have, all right, let's call item 7 special as well.
Item number 8 on the regular agenda is a transportation committee report. A public hearing has been held on that item.
All right. Item 8. Members of the council, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. Forthwith, on item 8.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 9 through 34.
All right. We have a card on item 15 in favor. And that's it. Is there anybody else in the chamber who wants to be heard on items 9 through 34? If so, we need you to fill out a card. And if not, we'll call 15 special, and the others, public hearings on the others are now closed. Members of the council, any specials, 9 through 34?
Madam President, item 10, merely for the purpose of walking out.
Okay. Mr. Fuer calls item 10 special. Ms. Mizakowski calls item 18 special. Anybody else? 9 through 34. Okay. Open the roll on 9, 11 through 14, 16, 17, and 19 through 34. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved.
On the continued agenda, item number 37, I understand there's a, I understand there's an amending motion on that one. Do you wish to call that one special?
There is. Madam President?
Yes. Mr. Fuer?
Regarding item 37, we have an amending motion that sets forth the funding sources for the item. I would move the item as amended.
Well, we also have some people who'd like to be heard, so can we just, let's, do you want to do that one now?
Sure.
Does anybody mind? We're going to do item 37 now.
That'd be great, Madam President. Thank you.
Mr. Gaffney and Mrs. Gaffney.
Hi. Thank you.
You can lift that thing up so you can talk.
Thank you all for having us and allowing us to talk. I just wanted to take a brief minute to talk to you as parents of a child with disabilities. We have three boys, three young boys. Our oldest is disabled, and want to take a moment to really explain and try to give our feelings of the needs of these sorts of parks throughout Los Angeles. Aiden's Place is part of boundless playgrounds, and the great thing about these parks is it enables able-bodied kids and disabled kids to play together. We have firsthand knowledge of this because we go to the parks throughout Los Angeles, and with the exception of Griffith Park, there is no park available where our son, who's in a wheelchair, can play. We can't get the wheelchair through the sand. We can't get him onto the equipment, so he's sort of forced to sit on the sidelines while our other two boys enjoy the playgrounds throughout Los Angeles. And with this, with these parks being built, and with Aiden's Place, which is scheduled to be built behind the federal building in Westwood, it will enable not only our child but all the disabled children throughout Los Angeles to have other parks where they can go and play. In addition, we think it's a tremendous value for able-bodied children because they get to interact with disabled children so that when they get, you know, when they get to high school, they get to different parts in their lives, they see a child in a wheelchair with a disability, it's not that big of a deal for them because they've broken down barriers at an early, at an early age because they've grown up going to these wonderful playgrounds. So without further ado, just wanted to thank you all for your support of this, and we look forward to building the second boundless playground on the west coast December 5, 2001. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. We are looking forward to getting this done. So we have Mr. Fuer's motion, which is item 37 as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith. Okay. We're on our way. Next item.
Item number 6 called special by council member Mizakowski.
Okay. Now, we have had a public hearing. We have a lot of cards here, which I haven't counted yet, but as we've already had a public hearing. Cindy, you called it special. Do you want to?
Let's have a 10-minute public hearing.
All right. Let me tell you how many cards we have here.
Well, let's have a public hearing and see how far we get.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. That will give them about 1 minute each.
Make it longer than, make 20 minutes.
Okay? All right. We are, is there any objection to having a public hearing? Although we've already had one. Hearing none. All right. In order, Richard McMinn, followed by Walter Prince, Betsy Mines, Sylvia Nickel, Ted Wu. I'll come back. Go ahead. We are having a 10-minute public hearing, and then we'll see how far we get.
Hi. Richard McMinn from the Hollywood Neighborhood Council. You know, rarely does a bill or an ordinance come in front of you that presents such a clear-cut case as this one. I hate to be so blunt, but a vote for yes on this is a vote for big-money contributors, heavily influenced on the politics of this place. A vote no is a vote for your conscience and a vote for your constituents' wishes. So it's real clear today which way you can go. So I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Prince.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Walter Prince, representing the Northridge Chamber of Commerce. We too have a concern about the billboard ordinance, not necessarily whether it should pass or not pass, but because we don't feel any studies have been done to show what the effect would be on the city. The ordinance calls for signs that could be 60 feet high. There's safety issues. They can be 9 per mile on the freeway, which creates safety issues with drivers, with distraction. We have no idea how many billboards now exist in the city, how many are legal, how many are illegal. There's no map showing them. We don't really have a handle on whether this is just transferring visual blight from one area of the city to another. Incidentally, as you know, there are only five council districts involved in getting the new signs on the freeway, and we don't know what the effect is on tourists that come through our city and see historic monuments and whatnot that might be blocked by these signs, these new signs. We don't know if they're going to have flashing lights. We don't know what the content is going to be on them. If school buses will be subject to topless bar advertising. There are just a lot of things that are not known about them. And from the Chamber of Commerce standpoint, we'd like to know what the financial effect is on several people. Number one, on the billboard companies. If you ask a billboard company to pull down 10 or 15 signs to replace one on the freeway, what about the companies that don't have 10 or 15 signs but do have freeway rights? What is the difference going to be in income to those companies? If a billboard generates $400 or $500 a month in income, Councilman Ridley Thomas is talking about pulling out 3,000 billboards across the city, perhaps more, at $400 or $500 each per month. Then you've got the landlords that rent to the billboard companies, and you have the city of Los Angeles that collects taxes from the billboard advertising and from the landlords. We would like to see a complete inventory done of all the billboards in the city before anything's done on this ordinance.
Okay.
Then from building a safety, get a list of the permitted ones and a list of the illegal ones. Then pull out the illegal ones and find out from the city clerk how much money that means to the city per month.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Prince.
Thank you.
Betsy Mines, followed by Sylvia Nickel. Pull the mic down. You'll hurt your neck.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm from Glassell Park Improvement Association, and our association last meeting presented a petition, so I'm just here to reinforce the statements that were made last time and ask for your consideration and to say goodbye to Councilman Hernandez and the others of you who are leaving. We wish you well even when you don't vote on our behalf. Thank you.
You can always come back in a week or two and say that again. Sylvia Nickel, followed by Ted Wu, and then Joyce Foster.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Sylvia B. Nickel, president of Westside Residence Association. We were established in 1984, and our boundaries are from Centinela to Wilshire Boulevard to the 4, 5, and to the 10 freeway. Our members are very concerned about this issue. It is a quality-of-life issue next to traffic. The billboards are a hot-button issue, and we feel that not enough studies have been done. We want an environmental study, and also what type of subjects can be put up on those billboards. There are a lot of nude juice bars abound in the city, and they have already those awful billboards around the city, so we certainly don't want objectionable subjects shown on the freeways. Also, I echo the sentiment voiced here that an inventory, an accurate inventory, has to be done on the illegal billboards. I surmise we will be very surprised of how many there are up, and they have to be removed first, and I would also hope that there could be penalties for those illegally erected billboards, not only to the billboard companies but also to the property owners, because I feel they have a responsibility to see that things are erected properly on their properties. And the issue is very concern, of much concern to our people, to our members, and I hope you will consider that and do the right decision, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wu, followed by Joyce Foster, Lori Jutilla, and then we're going to see, we're going to run out of time by that time, but see how far we get.
President, a member of the council. My name is Ted Wu. I represent here the citizens to ban billboard blight. Since we have only 1 minute, I will just submit the document I brought here to you illustrating 3 areas of concern that we have. The first one is a traffic hazard. I have 8 studies here that proves overwhelming evidence, the correlation between billboards and traffic accident. Officer, could you submit this on the record?
He's coming.
Yes. We have documentation of absolute correlation between traffic hazard and roadside billboards. Number 2 we want to submit also, on the Google research, we found 2,000 items stating the correlation between traffic hazard and billboards. We want to submit 8 samples here for your record. Number, the second area of concern we have is economic impact. Again, we would like to submit excerpts from testimonies in Houston, where it was said that the billboard pollution is the major obstacle of economic development and the creation of jobs. Okay. Thank you. The third area is the visual impact. I have a letter here from the local chapter of American Institute of Architects, strongly oppose this ordinance because of the detrimental image it will give the city if you put billboards on freeways, and that also reflected by the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Associations represent more than 55 local communities. And I want to be on the record that we have submitted today, May 29, all these documents into your file regarding this billboard ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There is also the legal ramifications, and I will let Joyce Foster deal with that. Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Joyce Foster. I'm also speaking on behalf of Citizens to Ban Billboard Blight. I'll make 2 quick points that have somewhat been touched on already this morning. The first point is on inventory of all the billboards that are currently in the city. I agree with the previous speakers that say, "We don't have that, and we need that before we can talk about adding any more billboards to this city." It's estimated by the Department of Building and Safety, which is the agency that does regulate billboards in the city, that there are approximately 10,000 boards in the city. Of these 10,000, it's estimated that 4,000 have code violations. Before considering allowing any billboards to be added anywhere in this city, we should ask for each billboard to have a valid permit shown to us if there are code violations that can be adopted. We ask that the billboards be brought up to code. If they can't, that they be removed. Before we look at adding any more or giving any trade, let's see what we have in this city that's legal. We may find out that we get rid of over 2,000 boards just by bringing them into compliance. The second point I'd like to make is, it is very clear, the California Environmental Quality Act has stated that any significant ordinance, anything that is considered significant that it may affect the environmental quality, has to have an environmental impact study done. We consider any new billboard ordinance should have necessary environmental review before any details of an ordinance are even looked at. We feel, the citizens to ban billboard blight, as many citizens in this community feel, that any environmental study that would be done would show that there is clear environmental impacts to this city by adding billboards to the freeway. Our position is that a full environmental impact study must be prepared because of this significant impact. I also have 2 documents to present to the council.
Sergeant, could you?
Both. Both of these giving factual information to what I just said. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We are actually over time now. We have 5 more people who wish to be heard. What is the council's pleasure? What did you move? Just go ahead?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Lori Jutilla, Ruth Freund, Mary Ann Cook, and Lori Dinkin.
Good morning. My name is Lowry Utilla.
I'm sorry. I got that wrong last time, too, didn't I?
That's fine. That was close, though. I'm with the Pico Neighborhood Council. I'm also a member of the Citizens to Ban Billboard Blight. This, this item before the city council reminds me of when 2 people go in to get a divorce, and one side says, you know, "I don't have any money in the bank account." The other side never takes their word for that. They take an inventory. Before any deal is made with the billboard company, an inventory needs to be taken. In order, the system to do that would be similar to what's going on with the apartment buildings now. We could establish a systematic code enforcement program where every standing billboard pays a fee for an annual inspection to ensure its compliance. Additionally, we could start a proactive code enforcement program like the PACE program that they have, where citizens are trained by the Department of Building and Safety to audit billboards and other signage in their communities. This way, the big problem with enforcement is that there's just a shortage of manpower, and this will bring the funds and manpower available to make a proper knowledgeable deal with the billboard companies. You know, one of the virtues of this great city of law You know, one of the virtues of this great city of Los Angeles is its weather and its views. And like the movie Indecent Proposal, in which the virtue of a man's wife was sold to the highest bidder, that's what I feel is happening with this billboard ordinance that's up. And I, and the people of the Pico Neighborhood Council, and many other people in the 10th District are against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ruth Freund.
Hi, I'm Ruth Freund, and I'm gonna give my time over to Susan Burus.
Okay.
I just came in. Thank you very much. I'd like to talk about the safety issues regarding this proposal. Regarding the proposed ordinance to open our freeways to billboard advertising, we respectfully urge you to consider directing the Department of Transportation to make a study of the relationship between highway accidents and roadside advertising. For public safety and welfare, we make this appeal to you based on the following factors. Previous studies show overwhelming evidence that there was direct relationship between the number of roadside billboards and number of traffic accidents. Some of them are decades old. With today's increased traffic, there is good reason for a new study. We wish to go on record that we now are submitting samples of these studies. I'm going to submit them to you in just a moment. The other item is tens of cities across the nation have recently enacted billboard restricting, banning ordinances based on the traffic safety issue. There are more than 2,000 items of such actions and decisions registered on the Internet. We wish to go on record that we are now submitting samples of these actions, which I will give to you. And also, the Plum Committee justified its refusal to order such a study by stating that the safety factor was not the city's concern but Caltrans. This despite that Caltrans testified to the Sign Task Force, which I sit on just a week before the hearing, that its only safety criterion was that roadside billboards had to be at least 500 feet apart, and that Caltrans had not undertaken any studies of the impact roadside billboards had on traffic safety. We wish to ask, is the city ready to really take such a position? And I'd like to submit items regarding this. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I have, the two remaining cards I have are Mary Ann Cook and Lori Dinkin.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Cook. I'm here representing the Silver Lake Residents Association and the Silver Lake Improvement Association, and I'm here to echo everything that has been said before, but also to ask you to please understand that Council District 13 and now Council District 4, which are the two council districts that represent the Silver Lake area, are not here to vote. We aren't being represented at all. So I'm here because I'm getting all the flack about the billboard ordinance without representation. I urge you to vote no, and do everything that has been said about taking inventory and finding out what's legal and what's not legal, and to try to eliminate some of this visual blight. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Dinkin.
Good morning. I'm Lori Dinkin, and President of Valley Village Chormoness Association. On May the 1st, we had sent letters to all council people, and I would imagine you have read them, you have them in your file, therefore I don't want to repeat what we have mailed to you. But I do want to warn you. Number one, we are very upset that many of the meetings that were held behind closed doors, so we, the public, had absolutely no input on these meetings. This, I believe, is against the Brown Act. Number two, we just have heard that a bill, that a manufacturer is going to manufacture electronic billboards, something like Times Square had. I think that's all we need on the freeways to distract our motorists, which is bad enough. And number three, I urge you, you have not given us any locations, any kind of specifics, where you're going to put these billboards possibly, and we are of course against it, or where they will be removed. You have given no locations. We don't know if anything will be moved out of Studio City, Valley Village, and so on and so forth, all over the city. This is another thing that has got to be done. We urge you to look into this. We urge you to vote no, because you're opening Pandora's Box. We have dealt with successfully, I might add, with the billboard companies, LR, Metropolitan, et cetera. But you're opening a Pandora's Box, and if they're going to give you, you know, they, you think you're gonna take a finger, they're going to take your whole hand, your whole arm, and swallow you whole. Believe me, we've dealt with them, we know what we're talking about. And I hope you will vote no on this proposal, and somehow find how you can eliminate some of the billboards that are now cluttering our city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and we have in order so far Ms. Mizakowski, Mr. Ridley Thomas, and Mr. Fuhr. Ms. Mizakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I applaud the citizens for coming down here today, and I applaud the citizens for reacting to what was proposed as a billboard reduction ordinance, an idea and a concept that said, "Let's look if we can, let's see if we can make a deal, let's see if we can get rid of some billboards in the city in exchange for allowing billboards where they now no longer exist." As was indicated by the city clerk, we have a majority report from the Plum Committee and a minority report. Members of the council, I have submitted today a substitute motion. I was the supporter of the minority reporting committee. I am not going to be moving that today. Instead, I'm going to be moving a substitute motion, which is labeled 6B on the desk. What this really will do is, this is a billboard reduction ordinance without giving anything away. What this says is, let's require registrations of billboards. Let's require the city building and safety department to find out where the illegal billboards are. There was one estimate I heard, and I don't know if the building and safety department is here, that as many as half the billboards in the city are illegal. Why shouldn't we get rid of those, reduce the billboards in the city that are not now legal, without giving anything away, without giving up our 50-year ban on our city freeways that says no billboards can be there? I'm sure many of us driving the freeways notice and feel the difference when we are in communities along freeways. I can think of going down the 5 south of the city of L.A., where one is just inundated with billboards. And the difference we have in this city, where we have vistas and scenic areas where you can drive the freeway, and although the freeway might be crowded and problematic, driving it and the vistas of the city that you can see that are not cluttered by billboards are something that makes this city special. This proposal, as was indicated by so many people who presented information to us, is fraught with lack of information. We don't know what the impact is on the highway safety, although nationwide there are studies that have said there are problems. We don't know the impact in terms of where there will, how many are legal. Were those that would be coming down, be brought down by the billboard companies in exchange for putting new billboards up, how many were illegal anyway? Why should we be giving anyone the benefit, a huge economic benefit and incentive of putting something up for taking something down that we don't know might not be illegal anyway? This motion has many, many clauses, asking the city attorney to first make permanent the interim control ordinance, which creates the billboard ban, while we work with building and safety and the city attorney to create a licensing process, to work with the city attorney on the requirement that all billboards post on their support structure, the permits showing that it's legal, and doing all of the kinds of things, a yearly registration fee that allows us to then have perhaps a sign inspector, or assign someone in building and safety department who would be responsible to make sure that all of the billboards that are up are legal, are maintained, and are not a blight in our community, which is what the original concept of this reduction ordinance was, that there were illegal billboards, there were billboards that had been abandoned, there are billboards that are not being maintained. And in an effort to try to rid our city of those, which we ought to, there was this opportunity or option presented by the billboard industry to say, "Let us have the freeway, and then we'll start taking down some of these bad boards." I think it's premature, as the community indicated. We ought not to move forward. We ought to move forward with this substitute motion instead, which really gets a study and a handle on what we are dealing with out there before we consider any opportunities, any options. And one of the options should not be opening our freeways to billboards.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to rise to support the substitute motion of Ms. Mizakowski, which I actually have seconded, and to just encapsulate my views for a moment or two, which mirror the views expressed so far by the majority of speakers and by Ms. Mizakowski. Why would we move forward to trade billboards today when first, the proposal that's before us doesn't indicate whether the billboards we're trading are illegal and should be taken down anyway? When the number of billboards is maybe less the issue than the quantity of space the billboards represent? And when there's been no traffic study to indicate whether we're creating an unsafe condition on our freeways for which, given that this would be a city ordinance, we could be liable? Why would we do that? Well, there's only one reason why we would do that today, and that's a lack of analysis that leads to a conclusion that is not substantial based on the facts. I mean, here's the deal. Mr. Ridley Thomas's original proposal, in broad strokes, might make sense in general. Should we trade lots and lots of billboards on the streets of the city for a few along the freeways? That might have, be an idea that has some merit. If we did a traffic study first, if we identified the illegal billboards and eliminated them from any trade-off second, then there might be some promise, especially if we could identify a quantity of billboard space that would make the trade-off worthwhile, and especially if, different from the proposal before us, the city retained the complete discretion as to which billboards should be taken down. But we do not under the proposal. Instead, we have before us just the idea, "Take down 15, could be illegal, don't care about the safety impacts, and put them up along the freeways." What kind of public policymaking is that? Well, it's far from what our constituents elected us to do. That's what kind of public policymaking it would be today. So despite, despite the core idea of the original motion potentially having some merit, the execution before us today does not. And I would urge that instead, we adopt Ms. Mizakowski's substitute motion, which begins to take us along the path of knowing which billboards aren't legal, of not having other ones come up until we know which ones aren't legal, and taking some common sense steps so that we're not trading that which should never have been there in the first place in exchange for the public safety of the residents we represent. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Hernandez.
Madam Chair, or Mr. Chair, I should say. Members of the council, there's been no issue more complicated than I've seen in this billboard ordinance, and I say that because I sit on the ad hoc committee on billboards, and we've been studying it. And some of the things that kind of emerged out of that ad hoc committee is, the only real study we've done so far is, we sent out a building and safety team on a motion Mr. Fuhr introduced, to basically find out how many legal billboards were in an area on Robertson Boulevard. And they basically identified 50 billboards and found out that all 50 were legal. And sorry to say, that was, from my perspective, that was the wrong area to check. Then the other thing we found out is that we sit here, and when we can get the city attorney's office to acquire the kind of facts they need to prosecute someone, and can get a judge to consider the legality of a billboard, the maximum that they can find that billboard company is $500 to $1,000. And so the billboard companies put them up, and they change them. And we spend tens of thousands of dollars trying to prosecute them for this fine. We also found out that Caltrans has their own process, and they allow billboards to go up on freeway entrances, and we have nothing to do. We might say, as to the location, the aesthetics, or whatever, but we really don't have a lot of control over what Caltrans does. And sorry to say, the state of California doesn't generate any revenue because of it. Now, the reason I'm pointing these things out is because this is a much more complicated issue. And part of my problem is, the city does need a tool. We need to be able to show what billboards are legal and which ones are illegal. But at the same time, we need to be able to remove them. And that's part of what is part of this proposal. Now, I'm not willing to say today I want to lose the tool, the ability to remove billboards. And that's a question that I've stood on since the beginning. I introduced a motion for basically a conditional use permit process whenever any billboard was introduced, and that was part of how this got to us. And it's because in my district, I believe I have a lot of illegal billboards. I also believe that billboards continue to come up because I have six freeway interchanges, and I need to have the tool to take them down. And I don't want to sacrifice that tool, knowing that it's a misdemeanor, knowing that they continue to go up, and that they basically are becoming illegal. But I got billboards throughout my district where you see, you can see them off the freeway. And people tell me those are illegal, but they're there. They're there. And we, as a city, had a policy where we didn't allow them. So, members of the council, I'm not sure we're ready to take a vote today. I want to ask for a continuance on this issue. I don't think that the putting up of billboards on freeway corridors should be limited to freeway corridors. What I'm thinking is, we need the tool to take them down. And any billboard that goes up should be removing billboards. We should always know that the number's getting smaller for any that we permit. So I'm not prepared to vote on what's before us today. I think it's important that the interim control ordinance be, keep, is kept in place, because you need to know that they've continued to take out permits. I have a list of permits that have been taken out in my district after we passed interim control ordinance, but I move for a continuance of this item, basically for a week, so that we can see if we can make something better that's before us.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Yes, I think Mr. Hernandez made some very valid points. Let me just say this. A lot of the information that you've been given, and we've heard in testimony, is erroneous. First of all, unfortunately, according to state law, which was enacted a number of years ago, any illegal billboard which has been there over five years is now considered to be legal, and we have no recourse. One of the things we've done in our ad hoc committee is to ask, to try to get a handle on how many legal and how many illegal billboards we have in the city, and we're told that it would be a monumental task involving all kinds of personnel. And I don't know whether the council is willing to make that kind of commitment or not. I'll be very honest with you, and all due respect to Ms. Mizakowski's motion. Now, I think that this is really basically a question of, do you want to get rid of undesirable billboards that exist today? And I mean, you have to ask that question. And basically, we're talking about an average of about 19 to 1 sides per one side that goes up in one of the large boards. And that's, it's a tough question, because I recognize the fact that people don't like billboards. I'm not crazy about them myself, to be honest with you. I don't have the same problem as much as other districts do, fortunately, but we need the ability to be able to get some of these other boards down. I don't see us having the tools or the ability to remove boards throughout the city that are objectionable in areas where they should be removed. And that is the only reason that I have even entertained the question of allowing the trade-off. This is a trade-off. Let's be honest about it. It is a trade-off, and somebody is gonna make money on it. I mean, there's no question about that, but without people having a profit, nothing happens. We don't build buildings, we don't build housing, we don't do anything if there isn't a profit motive. So we are, we have to understand that. The real question is whether we go ahead and approve an ordinance that will take down a large number of boards throughout our city. That's the real question before us. I have no problem with moving forward on a lot of what Ms. Mizakowski has proposed independently, because we're attempting to do that through our task force anyway, not just on billboards, but on inflatables and on other types of signs that are causing problems and blighting some of our neighborhoods. But I think that you need to really think seriously about whether you want to have the trade-off or not. Now, as far as the safety thing is concerned, we did have somebody from Caltrans before our ad hoc committee, and they said, "The only requirement they require is the distance." Well, I think it is the responsibility of Caltrans, not the city, to make sure that what is erected that affects the freeways should be their responsibility as far as safety. And I think if we move forward with this ordinance, that we ought to ask Caltrans and ask the state legislature to make them responsible, and the governor's office, because the responsibility for freeway safety is, belongs to Caltrans and the state. It is not a city issue. In fact, most of the traffic, the trans, that goes through our city are not residents. The majority of the traffic on our freeways are not residents of the city. They're people that live outside the city, that... They're people that live outside the city. That's true, I'm sorry, whether you like it or not, those are facts. You know, you have, you've got all this information that you've been telling us about, a lot of which is not correct. Now, I have some information because I asked for it, and a lot of the people, they live in outlying areas. Yes, a lot of them live in the county, or live in the outlying county regions that we supply employment and other activities for, or people that are traveling through on state highways that are going coast to coast or going up the coast. But the responsibility for safety belongs to Caltrans. I suggest that what we need to do, and I, I don't have a problem with adopting, and we, by the way, we've already imposed a moratorium. One of the things that I brought in, in relationship to this ordinance while we were debating it, was a moratorium which doesn't allow any construction of billboard permits. I, unfortunately, were unable to, to stop some of the billboards. We were not able to put a date in there other than they had a, the date that the council acted on it. And a, and a lot of the billboard companies, in my opinion, did not act in good faith and went ahead and put applications in. And that's what Mr. Hernandez was upset about and some of the others.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson.
Okay, I'll press my button again.
Chair recognizes Councilman Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, the majority report of the committee essentially requires a request that we consider two of the scenarios that have been considered, you may, that were considered by the committee. You may recall that there was one, two, and three. One was essentially the proposal that came before several of you, which you signed, which opened the discussion, or this particular stage of the discussion about the issue of billboards. Two was a proposal that came forward pursuant to the work being done by the planning department, who worked very hard on the issue of trying to come up with a credible way of controlling the over-concentration of billboards, removing what essentially in the mind of many communities would be classified as blight. And three was an alternative proposal put forward by the planning department that essentially does much of what was being requested in item number two, with recognition that if, in fact, we want to accomplish something of consequence. In other words, rather than simply having a debate and not moving forward with respect to the removal of the billboards, with the removal of those things that clutter various parts of the community, and it ought to be appreciated, we're talking about impacts in various parts of the city, not just one. People all over the city are motivated to deal with this issue. Many define it as a problem, I'm inclined to agree. The priority consideration is to get something done, which we have not been able to effectively do over a decade, when we have talked about this, debated this back and forward. We have something viable now. And I would think, in light of the proposals before us, the one that gets us moving in the right direction is scenario three. And I wish for us to take that, look at it seriously. I would want to move that. There are some suggestions that are made in Ms. Miskowski's motion that could be added to augment scenario three. But that is the more prudent, reasonable way to proceed, Mr. President, members of the council. I think we will satisfy a variety of communities with that. We will take billboards down, which is, in my view, the objective that we ought to be seeking overall to serve the public interest. I agree with Mr. Hernandez that it probably is appropriate to continue this item, and I say that just out of a practical set of considerations, Mr. President, because, given the fact that we have a motion that is just being presented now, that deserves our consideration, perhaps over the next few days, we can arrive at the appropriate level of consensus and move forward. But I do want on the table scenario three as presented by the planning department and with the appropriate amendments from the suggestions that have been made by Ms. Miskowski. And I want to be specific about those which I would consider. Number three on her motion has value. Number four on her motion, I would accept as being appropriate as well. And number five, three, four, and five, that's the extent of what I think at this point. Mr. President, that would conclude my remarks. I rise to clarify those issues for everyone, and perhaps after a few days more of deliberation, we can arrive at consensus.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilman Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, let me first move for a one-week continuance on the whole matter and share that I think when you look at the fact that council districts 14, mine, and council district nine represent 30 out of the 45 new erected billboards, and the fact that our colleague, Councilmember Walters, is not present, I think that this is really not the day to make this decision. Because, one, I'm not going to support it today, and I think on deference to Councilmember Walters. But I do want to look at, if there's a mechanism, there doesn't appear to be a mechanism to remove the most objectionable billboards in a particular impacted district. And the reason I raise that is because the participating companies may choose and may provide their billboards up for removal, but the community may find other billboards that are much more objectionable in locations that are not participating. So what is the mechanism to satisfy the community's desire to remove those billboards? And the other issue is, I profoundly believe that if a billboard is a target of graffiti, that the tagger is going to, really is lured by that visibility, and therefore, I would want the billboard industry to remove graffiti within 150 feet of that billboard when they remove the graffiti off of the billboard. Because if the lure is the billboard, then common sense would tell you that this tagger also provided graffiti along the way to get there. And so I would ask that there be some sort of relationship with the graffiti removal off the billboard with 150 feet surrounding that billboard. So there's some questions. Councilmember Hernandez has raised some. I do want to look at Councilmember Miskowski's suggestions in, in combination with what we're looking at today. And also, I don't believe the 60-40 split is really appropriate when four, five council districts are the impacted ones and 10 are not the impacted ones. So I want to relook at that, that ratio. I think the impacted ones deserve a higher percentage if you're going to ask them to, to bear the burden of having these billboards placed in front of them. So I would just simply ask for a one-week continuance so we can review all of these matters.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Chik.
Yes, I think it's very clear, colleagues, that we don't have the votes to reach a consensus today, so I also am going to support Mr. Hernandez's suggestion of a one-week delay. I do think, however, we are moving towards a good solution here. I am not willing to walk away from the opportunity to improve the current billboard situation. And so I do think that there are substantive ideas before us that need still, obviously, further fleshing out as a way to remove some of the existing problematic billboards. I, I had a lot of questions about which billboards, how that process was going to work, and I would not be prepared, even within a week, to vote on such a program until those questions are addressed, until it's clearly explained which billboards, how is it decided, et cetera. I also, though, am very pleased with what is in Councilmember Miskowski's motion because we cannot go forward and fix this long-term, widespread problem simply by finding creative ways to remove some of the problems and put up new billboards. And what is in Councilmember Miskowski's motion, I think, is a very specific and thoughtful plan to finally get our arms around what billboards are up legally, how do we enforce, how do we make sure that it's an ongoing program. One of the things that I would want back next week from Building and Safety is, in response to this substitute motion, what resources are needed? How would the program work? Because what we don't want to do is to think we're creating an enforcement program that would be effective and then not give the resources that are needed. So as, hopefully, what comes back in a week is further details about the removal of problem billboards and exactly how that would work, further information from Building and Safety and any other involved department on the costs and the actual operation of the enforcement and permitting process. And then hopefully, we can put those pieces together and have a two-pronged approach that really is going to make for a better city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Wax.
It's apparent that we're going to continue this, but let me say just generally, I, I think there's a lot of merit to Mr. Ridley Thomas's original approach in dealing with, with the existing issue. But I really believe that the exist, that the issue of illegal billboards should be dealt with simultaneously, not before, or not, but simultaneously with anything we do on the, the basic motion. I don't think it's the end of the world and that difficult to get rid of illegal billboards. The fact of the matter is, you go out and you find out which ones are illegal, and you charge enough of a fine for those that are to pay for the cost of your enforcement mechanism. And then you get them down, and then you can concomitantly, and in part and parcel, come up with a, a reduction proposal of the kind originally proposed by Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Burnson, and others. I, I do think that there's merit to your approach, Mark. I have from the beginning in dealing with this. I have no patience at all, though, for people who do something illegally, because when they do it illegally, they know it's illegal and they have to pay the consequences of that. And we'll never, we'll never have a better opportunity to deal with the illegal issue than now. This is the leverage you have to come up with a total package. So rather than, say, Mr. Fuhr's motion of dealing with the illegals before you deal with this, and rather with others, well, we'll deal with that later, I think you deal with it at the same time. And you make those who are responsible pay for it, and, and then you go ahead with a, with a complimentary proposal which will be in the spirit of what Mr. Ridley Thomas first proposed. And that's the approach I'd like to see. Otherwise, we'll never really get to the issue of illegal.
Thank you, Councilman. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Miskowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, we don't have to give up the freeways. Mr. Ridley Thomas's proposal, which said, allow a billboard to come up, force them to come down, need not be on the freeways. If we pursue what I'm talking about in the substitute motion, first of all, we are going to have a billboard reduction ordinance. Mr. Kime from Building and Safety had indicated that as many as 4,000 billboards in the city may have, may be illegal today, may be partially illegal, may be other things wrong with them in, in its nature. The city attorney has indicated that we can enforce billboards, even if they were up for five years without a permit. We, they may have to be creative in how they do it, but they can do it. The city attorney is here to tell us that, and I think it's useful to have all of these people come to the table next week with an analysis and answering some of those questions. It's not just a Caltrans problem if we say, put them on, on Caltrans because Caltrans runs the freeways. If we make the definitive act that says they can now be in the city of L.A., we have to take the responsibility for being certain that it's not unsafe, that we are not aggravating an already bad condition. So it is our responsibility. Again, this, everything that is embodied in here need not necessarily be thrown out. I think that the idea of finding the illegal billboards, creating an enforcement mechanism, creating a registration system, creating the permanent moratorium or ban on billboards, except where they come in for a trade-off on city streets, that can be all still managed on city streets. It doesn't need to be a freeway giveaway. Again, for 50 years, this city has said, no billboards on our freeways. I don't think we want to give that up lightly. It is something that is known in this city. It's, it's visually aesthetic. Granted, there are exceptions where sometimes you can see something on a, on a major boulevard that sort of catches a freeway glimpse. But, but that is a very, very backward step that I think we would be taking in this city if we say now we are going to open up freeways to billboards. I think that this motion embodies a lot of what was testified and a lot of what we need to know. We shouldn't be making a deal in the dark. And that's what we are doing if we don't know what is illegal that is out there now, that we can aggressively create a mechanism to go after and really see significant reduction of billboards in the cities, reduce the ones, get rid of the ones that have been abandoned. There are those that have been illegal, but just like every other public nuisance abatement, when we have an abandoned structure, an abandoned use, we can go after it and cause it to be abated. Why not for an abandoned billboard, the ones that have the, the faces that are peeling and, and are unkept? We need to know all of those mechanisms that are available aggressively. I think that you're right. We can't just say we're going to do it and not put the teeth behind to get it done. But I think there's a will in this council. I'm hearing everyone say that the only reason we were even going to consider this idea was to get rid of those things that were blight, were bad, and we wanted to see reduced. If we feel that way, then we should be able to put the money in the mechanism, ask our city agencies to come back for all the appropriate mechanisms. I have legislation from other cities throughout the country, other states, which they have done very, very big, impressive things, not just banning them entirely, but also creating that registration and that licensing that really causes a billboard control. And I think that we have failed in this city to do that in the past, and we need to move forward effectively.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Miskowski has really done an exceptional job in her motion and in her testimony of, her remarks of really getting to the heart of the issue. Cindy refers to this as a deal in the dark. Well, it's only that way because the billboard companies want it that way. And the billboard companies want it that way, and we're allowing it to happen that way. Why would we do that? If the billboard companies want to engineer this trade-off, the billboard companies can come forward and address the concern that so many have expressed today about the illegal billboards that currently exist. If the city attorney is uncertain whether we have the horsepower to say to the billboard companies, you are compelled to show us a permit for each billboard you have up, for example, let that be part of this discussion. We'll consider the trade-off under some circumstances on streets, wherever it might be. You come forward first and tell us what's legal and what's not, so the deal is in the light of day, not in the dark. Then we can have a meaningful discussion. But while we would capitulate to a discussion that only has one side to it is beyond me completely. I also want to underscore a point I made earlier regarding liability to which Ms. Miskowski just made reference. Mr. Burnson has had a lot of experience on these issues for a while and raises an important point, that, that Caltrans has a rule regarding the spacing of billboards along freeways. But the mere fact that Caltrans has that view will not help the city when, if we were to adopt this ordinance and be sued by a victim of a traffic accident on the freeway who claims that the motorist who hit her was distracted by a billboard that we allowed by our ordinance to be put up. Who wants to open the door to that kind of liability in a city where one of the main issues that, right now, is reducing, not escalating, city liability? You can bet that someone's going to lay the blame for that on us when we create the ordinance that allows that to happen. And let's be real, a billboard company exists so that its signs can distract people from what otherwise they are doing. That's the point of a billboard, to distract your eyes from where otherwise you would be looking. Otherwise, a billboard would be a completely ineffective tool. Now, some of us might be hoping that they're ineffective tools for other purposes, but that's another story. But, but, that's right, but in seriousness, that is the issue. They're designed to distract a motorist or a pedestrian from what they're doing. We are creating a situation in which distractions will occur and accidents will occur without knowing the traffic safety consequences of that, and from a mere And from a mere liability standpoint, leaving the aesthetics and economics aside, that's nuts.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Well, just to follow up on Mr. Fuhrer's comments, I might add that if that is correct, then so are billboards in the city. Because, in fact, they are probably more dangerous, if you follow that line of argument, because of the fact that people in the city are making turns in traffic and so forth. On the freeway, you're pretty much driving along, and, you know, so the distraction can be a lot more serious in the city, Mr. Fuhrer, than it is on the freeways. Well, first of all, the things that are proposed in Ms. Sikowski's motion were all things that came out of our task force, which she has put into a motion. I think that eventually, some of these things were going to come from the task force in the form of how to deal with billboards and other types of signs in the city, other than what we're talking about, the freeway trade-off. I don't have a problem most of it. I think they should be registered. I think they ought to be permitted. I totally agree with that. I have some questions about whether we can enforce the five-year illegal ones. I'd like to hear the city attorney at some point tell us whether we have that ability. But I can tell you that we asked Building and Safety what it would take to enforce and find out which are the legal ones and which are the illegal ones. And we specified those within the past five years that didn't have permits because we were relying on state law. Now, if there's a change in that, that the city attorney feels that we can challenge, I'd be most interested in seeing that, because I do not support any illegals being left standing in the city. I think they ought to all be removed if they're illegal. That having been said, I think that it's important that we understand the purpose that Mr. Ridley Thomas came forward with this. There are certain districts in the city, and mine doesn't really happen to be one of them, although we do have a few I'd like to see gone. But I recognize the fact that there are council districts that are heavily impacted. The 14th is heavily impacted, the 8th, the 9th, those districts, and Mr. Holden's district, Mr. Hernandez's district, these are areas that need assistance. Now, we're not going to be able to get any help for them without having some tool. And this is merely a tool that allows us to do that. So, you have to weigh this. Yes, obviously, if we had our druthers, we'd say, "No more billboards either on the freeways or otherwise." But that doesn't change the situation that now exists. This is a means of dealing with it. That doesn't mean that we can't go forward, and I think that the committee, the task force, was prepared to recommend some other sanctions as far as abatement was concerned other than on the freeways. And I think that we still can, Cindy, go forward with some of the things you suggested there. But that doesn't give us really the ability to deal with a large number of signs in the city that the billboard ordinance would do. And I would suggest that we require, and this is from a safety point of view, that we ought to ask the state to make sure that they give their approval as far as safety is concerned, other than just the 500 feet. Regardless of whether we pass this or not, they should be responsible, if they're going to permit a sign to go in on the freeway, whether it's in the city of Los Angeles or whether it's anywhere else in the state. They ought to be responsible for the safety functions of it, and we ought to ask for that. So, I'm going to support the continuance, because I don't think there are eight votes for anything here today. But I would ask all of you who are here in opposition, and apparently very well organized, and I respect that, and I understand where you're coming from, and our thoughts are not entirely different. I just have to be pragmatic and understand the spirit in which Mr. Ridley Thomas's motion was made and what it hopes to accomplish. So, we can do both. We can try to find a way to deal with the proliferation that we now have. We can also find a way to deal with other signs throughout our city. We're dealing with super graphics. We're dealing with pole signs. We're dealing with inflatables. We have already brought in moratorium on all of these while we are having our discussions. So, it's not as if we're not moving forward. The big problem is, let me just conclude here, and I won't press my button again. The big problem here is, we need to know what it's going to take from Building and Safety, and I hope that they will be prepared at our next meeting to tell us what number of personnel it's going to require to accomplish what this council wants done as far as the things that are outlined by Ms. Sikowski's motion and by some of the things the task force has asked for.
Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, for some reason, I feel that we have a lot of work before us, but at the same time, I don't think it's as much as we want to believe there is. I think it's important that the city attorney distinguish from some of the comments previously made, because if there are illegal billboards up right now, why haven't they been taken And that's an important question, because it was answered to us at the ad hoc committee. A lot of work goes into preparing for a case to take them and prove that it's illegal, but the bottom line is, courts don't listen to them, and we have thousands of them, because it is a misdemeanor violation. So, it's not just that simple as getting them to come down. We currently have a case pending before us where we've spent $170,000, or at least authorized $170,000 in the CRA area, dealing with one billboard. Now, I, members of the council, represent an area whose streets are looked at as freeway corridors, because everybody travels through them. And I have billboards in areas that legally have been allowed to be put up because it's industrial zone land in neighborhoods where people live, much different than those neighborhoods that, for example, Councilmember Ms. Sikowski might represent. So, to me, it is very important that we have a comprehensive approach to this issue and that we basically take down as many billboards as we can. But it's not going to happen without the cooperation of the industry. It's not going to happen with a big stick. And I happen to know that it's not just enough to talk about protecting the freeway corridors, you have to talk about protecting the neighborhoods. And that's why I don't want us to lose focus of the tool. And the tool is the ability for them to come down voluntarily, and at the same time, any that are illegal not to be counted as part of that formula, and for those to come down. And again, a moratorium on new billboards unless there was a process to accept them. So, I'm just bringing it out to everybody's attention that there has to be a lot of dialogue between now and next week, or else nobody's will is going to happen here. And we're going to end up with a scenario that we currently exist, which is why we're here today, because nobody's happy with what's before us today.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, I think this discussion has been well worth having. It at least has now afforded the members of the council to speak to this issue from their respective vantage points, and I believe that a degree of clarity is emerging. And so, I wish to thank everyone for contributing to this discussion. I want to reiterate that the impact of billboards is in various parts of the city. It is not as though CD 5 is unaffected. It happens not to be affected in the same way as CD 1 is, but both are in different ways. Parts of CD 11 are affected, particularly with the larger billboards, the bulletins in particular, that need to be dealt with. Anyone who thinks that the takedown provision of the original proposal, when I brought it in, or, number three, that I'm now suggesting that we adopt, you are mistaken, misled, uninformed, misinformed at that point. We want it to be as comprehensive and as aggressive as is reasonable and/or allowable. And if you look carefully at the staff report, you will appreciate that there is an attempt to act in the best interest of the public. Now, those who claim that things have been done in the dark, I wish to challenge that. We've had several public hearings, several task force meetings, more work is being done. The work of the staff has been in circulation for a month. There's a lot on the table, more to be placed on the table, in full view, plain view. And so, I would hope that members of the council who have asserted that would be kind enough to reflect on whether that can be substantiated as an assertion. The final point I wish to make, Madam President, is the following. Our objective ought to be the following: Act in the public's interest, maximize the public interest. That's what we should try to do in striking the appropriate balance and the decision that we have to make. There is a mistake here if we think that the industry speaks with one voice. It's a mistake if we think those who have problems with the proposal speak with one voice. There is a lack of consensus in those two contexts. The consensus that needs to be achieved is here among us, and I think we're well on our way in that regard. And I think there's wisdom and continuance and further reflection. While I take my seat, Madam President, I wish to say that with respect to Scenario 3, as proposed by the Planning Department, the amendments to it would be adopted from Ms. Sikowski's motion. Again, they are 3, 4, for the benefit of the clerk, 5, and I would add 7, because it has value as well. And that, I hope, will come back to us in a more coherent form, and I believe we'll be able to adopt something a week from today, and I think we'll all have much of which to be proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
I was just simply going to add that as one of the heavily impacted districts, in terms of the new billboards, I agree that we're all impacted by billboards. I just felt that there could have been a little more outreach to our office, and I can't speak for Councilmember Walters, but I think that the outreach was lacking, not only from the industry, but from some of our staff. So, I think at the end of this process, we will have a good product. But I definitely feel that when you start off with 60-40, and that doesn't seem to recognize that there's a whole group of us who are carrying the burden for the rest of the city in this equation. So, I just ask that we relook at that whole relationship.
Mr. Subornich.
I moved the previous question.
That's very fortuitous. You're the last person listed on here. So, if I remember this correctly, from after all this debate, the goal now is to continue this for one week. Everybody comfortable with that? It is now continued for one week.
I don't think we have a choice.
No, no, besides, I just did it. So, it'll take eight votes, or, what is it, two-thirds vote to overrule me. Okay, we're going to hold Item 7 on the desk for the moment, and we're going to go back and do Items 1 through 5. It appears we will not have 12 members here today, and therefore, these are all ordinances. So, members of the council, does anybody have any specials on? We had no cards on these, so the public hearings will be closed. Well, that's the effect. If we take the vote and we don't have 12 votes, which we won't, they'll go over one week, which is the same as withholding. So, are there any specials? Does anybody want to discuss Items 1 through 5, the public hearings for which are now closed? Okay, open the roll on Items 1 through 5. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved, but go over to a week from today for a second reading. And that should bring us to Item 10. Mr. Fuhrer called it special in order to depart, which he is now doing. Please note that Mr. Fuhrer has departed. And open the roll on Item 10. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved. Somebody tell him he can come back now. And that brings us to Item 18, called special by Ms. Sikowski.
I'm going to move 18A, which is just including a project that had previously been in the TAFRA resolution. There was a change in ownership. We needed to verify that they were still going to offer the same opportunities to low-income tenants. We've now verified that, so I'm asking that that be included.
18A. Okay. You've heard Ms. Sikowski's motion. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved. And I seem to have skipped over Item 15. Well, now, somebody wanted to be heard on Item 15.
Forthwith, Madam President.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Item 18, forthwith. Teresa de Cosenzo.
President.
Yeah, there we go.
And members of the council, this item was on the consent calendar and could surely have passed without comment. I wanted to be here this morning to, first of all, thank the members of the council for your ongoing support of our work on behalf of homeless, abused, abandoned, and neglected children. In passing this item this morning, you join your voices collectively and individually with mine on behalf of those children whom many of us on the way home turn our faces away from because they're living in the streets. I wanted also for each of you to know, the passage of this item enables our agency to increase the number of beds for the children we serve by 30 percent. So, again, I thank you sincerely and urge you to pass this item. I wanted particularly to thank Councilmen Holden and Pacheco and their staff for the wonderful and thorough work on this project. I want also to thank Councilman Fuhrer for his generous giving of his time over the years for the work we do. And also want to thank Councilman Wax for his enduring and faithful support of our programs. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Mr. Wax. Moves approval. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith on that.
Forthwith on 27.
And forthwith on 20. Yes, is everybody aware, by the way, that when we continued the billboard item for a week, we're talking about Election Day?
I'll be here.
You want to maybe kick it over to Wednesday?
Let's kick it over to Wednesday.
All right. So, Item 6, which we announced would be continued one week, will actually be continued one week plus one day. That brings us to Item 7. And members of the council, this is an item in my district. I'm going to ask that we continue that to July 17. Is that a council item?
July 17?
Yeah. July.
I'm busy.
Yeah, I know. Some of you will never have to hear about it again.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday, all right. Everybody comfortable? I know you're all dying to have another hearing and discuss this yet again. Okay, without objection, Item 7 is continued to July 17, and we need a letter from the applicant to that effect. And that, I believe, clears the agenda. What else have we got? Public comment. I don't have any cards on public comment. Is there any? Now, there's a commentary in itself. Is there anybody in the chamber who wishes to address the council on an item not on today's agenda?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. On Item 7, it's not clear that we can continue the plan amendment part of that.
Well, why don't you guys make up your mind while I finish off with the public comment? This was what we were supposed to be checking all this for the last two hours. So, can you go talk to them? Is there anybody in the chamber who wants to address the council on items not on today's agenda? Seeing none, the public comment period is closed. What happened to Item 38? Do we still have a 38?
It's closed session.
Yeah, I know, but we do still have that. All right. So, you guys go make up your mind on Item 7. Well, look, with respect to Item 7, there's already been a hearing on this, and I believe all the people who've turned in cards have spoken previously on this item. I'm prepared to move the plan amendment today, but I would prefer to continue the whole thing if we're...
You're all shaking your heads and waving signals. Just tell me...
Tell me what days. It turns out there's some complication here we don't know about. We can only continue the plan amendment a certain number of days, and the rest of it some other number of days. So, just somebody from the city attorney's office, tell me what we can do here so we can do it.
14 days from yesterday. Maria, what is that? Do you have your calendar? We'd have to do it less. It would be the...
14 days would be, two weeks from today is the 12th. 14 days would be the -- two weeks from today is the 12th.
None of us could --
So it would have to be the Friday before that, which must be --
It would have to be the Friday before. It would be June 8th. June 8th, yeah, June 8th.
Okay. All right. So we'll continue the plan amendment to June 8th. For the moment, let's continue the whole thing to June 8th, and then we'll decide what to do after that, and we'll confer with you ahead. All right. So Item Seven is now continued to June 8th. Now or then? I thought that's what they were continuing.
No, they're continuing the zone change and the plan amendment.
Now, Gail is telling me they're just going to continue everything. Claudia is telling me we're only continuing part of it. We cannot continue the site plan review, so the --
I don't think the applicant has a problem with that. Can deny the site plan review?
All right. Now, am I going to get -- who's going to get -- make -- put me in trouble if we -- if I move to deny the site plan review without prejudice? I'm going to continue the whole thing until tomorrow to settle this thing. If we can't get an answer to this right now, I'm just -- we're going to put the whole thing over until tomorrow, and we're going to get this all worked out with the City Attorney's Office.
Objection?
Oh, this is the last day, though, right? So we can't do -- that's the problem. We can't -- we have -- yes, sir. Wait, wait, get the mic on. Can we have his mic?
My understanding is that the only item that needs to be acted upon today is a grant of a time extension to the 75-day time limit, and we voluntarily have sent a letter to the City Council Office and the City Clerk asking for that time extension.
And that's what the City Attorney is telling me is, I mean, you know, half an hour ago, that's what I thought, too. Now they're having trouble figuring that out.
Claudia Culling, City Attorney's Office. There are three matters before you. You have a zone change, a plan amendment, and a site plan review. You can accept the continuance request from the applicant for the plan amendment up to 14 more days. You can accept the request for a continuance on the zone change, and the site plan review must be acted upon today. You can deny it without prejudice, and the applicant can come back, but it has to be acted on today. Today's the last day. There's no continuance possible in the code.
All right. I'm now also informed that Mr. Holden is within two or three minutes away, and we could actually do this today. But at this stage, are you guys going to flip out if we deny the site plan review without prejudice, and then we can go and take care of all of -- get all this resolved? What else do we have?
We have our closed session item.
We have a closed session. Let's do the closed session. We're going to do the closed session. Might as well -- we're not going to hold up the whole Council over this. So you guys go all figure that out while we ask those of you who are not a part of the closed session, which includes all of you who are here on Item Seven, to please leave and let us do the closed session. You can all come back later if you really want to. Yeah. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved, and now those are done with. And Item 38, which we had in closed session, we need to do an open session. Open the roll, close the roll. Item 38, the one we just did in closed session. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Forthwith on that one, please. And that, I believe, brings us back to Item Seven. Now, Members of the Council, we have had a -- Mr. Savornich. Mr. Savornich, can you take this so I can go? You can run a timer on me.
Hey, Rudy. 65.
Yeah.
It'd be better if you go to chip. Yeah, either chips or Savornich. I'm sorry, that way, because otherwise you don't show up on the empty ones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a project in my district that is one, like many of my -- in my district, where it's proposed in an area that has a number of different uses. It is across the street, more or less, from the Playa Vista Project, where we have debated for a number of years what, when we like it, we call mixed use, and when we don't like it, we call it spot zoning. But it's essentially the same issue. And as you've all seen in the letter that I sent to each of you at the end of last week, I -- the reason I am supporting this application is that the west side of Los Angeles has a very drastic shortage of housing. We have many, many workplaces, not all of them in the city of Los Angeles, but most of the housing is in the city of Los Angeles, and it is not enough. The reason we have so much traffic on the west side is that there is no balance between the jobs -- the number of job sites and the number of housing units. It's particularly difficult for people of modest means to find housing, although many of them work there. And if you doubt it, if you drive eastbound on the Santa Monica Freeway in the morning from the west side, you will see that everybody in the world is driving west, and that is because they work there, but they can't live there because there isn't enough housing. So because this has come through in the form it has come through, the Planning Commission denied it because it was spot zoning, and the Plum Committee split. Therefore, in order to approve this, but with some conditions, we would need to actually make an addition. And so I'm going to move approval of the whole package, that is, approval of the site plan, the zone, all that stuff, with the conditions that were recommended in the environmental impact report. Those conditions have not, up to now, been imposed because the Planning Commission denied it and the Plum Committee split. So my motion, which I fervently request your support, is to approve the project with all the requisite technical details here with the conditions that are spelled out in the environmental impact report, the mitigations that are spelled out.
Thank you, Madam President. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Zikowsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. As one of the members of the majority of the Planning Committee who recommended against this, I just wanted to indicate why I think the majority committee had at that time. Members of the Council, this is in an area that shows on this plan as industrial, and it is shown as light industrial as part of what the plan has indicated ought to occur, and it, in fact, is what does occur in that area. There is light industrial uses, motion picture production, et cetera. And a lot of that, or at least motion picture production, is, in some instances, 24 hours or late night when they're doing major production. What is before us today is to change a parcel in the midst of that island of light industrial to the commercial zone, and then in that commercial zone, approve a residential 309-unit apartment that will be literally an island surrounded by light industrial uses as the plan designates, making that one little square commercial zone for residential uses. There's no question that we have a housing shortage in this area. There's also no question that we have issues of runaway production, and we had the indication from the production studios in this area that they had searched long and hard to find this site, which was away from commercial, away from residential, precisely so they could have free-form production, which is what we encourage. We are also facing a shortage in this city of our industrial land base. We know that. We see it eroded, and we see it, the kinds of problems that occur when industrial comes up and abuts residential uses. Members of the Council, the Planning Commission voted seven to nothing to deny this case. Members of the Planning Commission felt it was so important to tell us their view and what and how they felt that this was not a positive step to take, fully aware of the housing crisis, that they came -- three members of the Planning Commission came to the Planning Committee to express that view, as well as a number of the industrial owners around this property who were fearful that a residential imposition in the center of this industrial area was going to doom them, doom them to complaints from neighbors that would then be put there, which would be an incompatible use. Basic zoning says it's not the most compatible thing to put industrial uses immediately abutting residential. And the only way this project has been designed is completely to turn inward, to create the walled community that then would then be this housing project in the midst of this industrial area. So it's for that reason that the majority Planning Committee recommendation is to oppose this and uphold the recommendation of the seven to nothing vote of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Hernandez.
Members of the Council, I basically was the minority report at the Plum Committee. And I was the minority report because I do understand the housing needs of the city of Los Angeles, and I do understand the future of Los Angeles and where Los Angeles is. Now, when we talk about this light industrial zone, let's understand that you have commercial uses there also, and you have a lot of employees who work there. It's not a zone that has smoke stacks. It's nothing like the industrial zones that Councilmember Pacheco represents, that I represent, that Councilmember Padilla represents. Most of the people who show up there basically have white-collar jobs. Now, what's unique about this project is when you talk about the concept of job-housing balance, is I strongly believe many of the people who are going to live in that housing are the people who work in that area, and they're not going to be traveling on our freeways, and they're not going to be polluting our streets. Right now, we say that it's proper to put housing in certain neighborhoods and to put industrial in other neighborhoods, and to put light manufacturing in other neighborhoods, and to have open space in other neighborhoods. The reality is, that's not Los Angeles. Los Angeles is a mixed-use city, and the city of the future is going to require the kinds of projects that this represents, a project that does provide the buffering for what the uses are that are immediately adjacent to it, a project that does going to allow for some housing for the people who work there. And it's basically, from my perspective, what the concept of job-housing balance is supposed to be about. There's no question that Los Angeles has a lot of film production, and then you go in my district, you'll see film production happening next door to housing, and that is not an uncommon sight. Now, I wish I could claim to have the kinds of districts other councilmembers have, I just can't. And that reality has happened because of the way the city has been planned, but it's also happened because of people's incomes, and it's also happened for a variety of reasons. I think this represents what housing's going to be like in Los Angeles in the future, and I think that the developer has done such a good job, it's going to be attractive to residents. And the fact that they're going to be able to live and work next door and not have to travel across town on a freeway makes a lot of sense to me, and that's why I basically had a minority report.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Holden.
You telling me to choke up? Oh, Mr. Burnson. Ms. Galanter, Manchester Square was in your district before you took all those housing away?
It's still in my district.
Oh, but is the housing gone? That's what I really mean. So it's almost like to say, when you have the power to give, you have the power to take away. And the Commission said that they didn't want these housing units over there, and sometime we go along with the Commission. I just want to know, I want to hear one good reason why you're saying that we ought to support you. I thought you were going to be against this project.
I don't know why you thought that. I sent you a letter on Friday that told you I've supported it from the beginning, and I continue to support it.
Before I got the letter, is what I'm saying.
Oh, I see.
I heard rumors, and they don't count.
Yeah, I heard those rumors, too. Those people don't come in my office anymore.
Oh, Ms. Galanter. In any case, you think the Commission was off-base on this one, is that correct? Yes or no?
I'm sorry.
You think the Commission was off-base on this one?
I do think the Commission was off-base. I understand their reasoning, but I think that they're wrong.
And these housing units are needed, is what you're saying? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Burnson, maybe you want to respond, because I think you're on the -- you're on the other side of this at one point.
Yeah.
And I trust your judgment sometimes.
That's your first mistake.
I know. But my clock and my time is running, so just go ahead and --
Okay, I think I'm up next, anyway. Originally, I was opposed to this. I was part of the majority report, and basically because of a couple of reasons. First of all, the fact that the conditions which have been added now were not part of the report initially.
Okay, then you can speak -- finish out on your time. I would say this, then, that when the airport was built, there were very few housing units adjacent or surrounding the airport. And then they brought the housing units in, and then, once they were there, they realized, oh, we're near a airport. Now, let's complain about the airport. Now, if you put these housing units in, the question's going to be whether or not, once they're there, oh, they can say, well, they have a big industry around here. We got to complain about the industry. I think you got to have some condition in here to let the owners know, if they could be apartment units, or the owner of the unit know that going in, you are acquiring, developing, housing in an industrial zone, period, and don't come back later on complaining about the fact that that's where you are. I don't know if Ms. Galanter's listening to me, but I think you got to have some kind of a stipulation to that. And maybe Mr. Burnson can talk about it when he speak. But I would say to you that I don't want them complaining after the fact that they are in an environment that they don't like. They are moving into that environment, so don't complain about it later on. And if that's what you want to do, fine, and, you know, I'll go along with this change of heart.
Thank you, Councilman. The Chair recognizes Councilman Burnson.
Yeah, basically, Members of the Council, I was not aware of the exact composure of this and the fact that what is there is basically not a real smokestack or normal, traditional industrial area. I am one who listens to the council member of the district. I think that Ms. Galanter certainly is -- has a better knowledge of this, and on the surface, normally, those two things don't mix, but this is not a traditional industrial M-area, M2 area. In fact, probably a better designation for the entire area might have been an MR1 or MR2, which may be something that would be considered in the future. I'm going to go along with the request of Ms. Galanter's to approve this with the new conditions that are added and with the findings that need to be made, so I'm going to support the minority report plus those added conditions that have been put in.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Madam Clerk, I believe we have before us is the motion by Councilwoman Galanter.
Can I hit this one more time?
One more time?
You have a motion? You have to -- question to substitute.
I believe the Council President wants to make one final comment. Madam President.
All right. I just -- all I wanted to add is that I think everybody is right to agonize over the loss of industrial zoning. The problem that we have is that what's happening to all that industrial zoning out there and has been since before I got on the Council is it's all turning into office buildings. So we're either talking housing or office. So what we want to do here is vote to adopt the minority report, the findings that are now certifiably before us, the conditions, the mitigations that were included in the environmental impact report. And with that, let's go.
Okay. For the record also, we do have some speakers' cards, and they will be made part of the file since there was a hearing in committee. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll on the Council President's motion and tabulate the vote?
11 ayes, one no.
Okay. That item is approved. Forthwith.
Yes, forthwith, please.
Next item.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, do we have adjourning motions?
Do we have a microphone? We do have adjourning motions. Would everybody, please, stand for adjourning motions? Anybody over here? Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the Council, I would like to ask that we adjourn in great sadness and memory
I would like to ask that we adjourn in great sadness in memory of Ralph Gamaros, 32-years-old, who was killed on Friday working on the Alameda Corridor when a truck backed into him at about quarter to 11:00 in the morning. He is survived by a loving family, and he was a defensive line coach for the city champion Banning High School Pilots in both their 1999 L.A. City Invitational title and last year's L.A. City Championship. His team and his colleagues found of his passing during practice Friday afternoon. This was a very unfortunate accident, and I would like to ask that we adjourn in his memory and send condolences to his family.
All members?
All members.
All members.
Anybody else? Thank you. We are adjourned.
Madam Clerk, for the record, I was out of the room.
We've changed.
Was not included in that last vote.
We recorded that.